...of open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. The mission statement of Lunenburg Public Schools is to provide all students with the skills, confidence, and passion for lifelong learning so that they may find their own path to successful careers, active citizenship, and rewarding lives. Now I would like everyone to stand and rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are going to go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with union personnel. Um, roll call vote?
Mr. Leving?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashenby?
Yes.
Mr. Woback?
Yes.
Mrs. Burkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Schrock?
Yes, and we will be back when we are done with the executive session.
We thought I'm actually wish I was there. Why is scooping down your hand? I don't get that. Some of the other factors, most of the people in that team, they're fighting, fighting, you know, that's the thing.
The bottom one on far right, the bottom one? All around the end, yeah, that's the one.
How long does it seven become off so?
I know.
Maybe seven before last.
I know.
We did a jet eight email, you know.
I'm sorry, I told her, I have a pocket time hall.
Right.
I was actually about to check my calendar because, or I checked the agenda, see what I had here. Because people just start, usually start.
Right.
They're agenda. I was here on PTO, who does the donation of the last meeting.
Before you do a better shot, excuse me.
I know, well, I think, you know.
They do, they do, it's so, so scary.
Yeah, well, because they do, the NA started, so there has been very executive session.
Yeah.
I asked, I wanted to, I told that you had taken a big mistake.
Yeah, we have decided that stuff?
Yeah.
And I feel like actually we just, what did I say? He's such a good program.
I mean, I felt the news of the district, so I didn't want to stress this.
We just moved here two and a half months ago.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
What is it?
Not sure.
Okay.
So we used to have, we call care, seven to five, thirty, it was in the day, but it's still running on.
Okay, well, that's awesome.
Yeah, and it was a lot of things, they didn't have like a delay, you could drive across at the same time they would do every day.
That's what we're used to.
It was cool, but why didn't see any there?
Oh, that wasn't your line?
Yeah.
Why didn't you stay from inside school?
They did like a whole building for that before and after, they called it.
It was a big, but a little, that's a little.
Yeah, well, the reason why.
You guys supposed to get a job.
Yeah, the work.
I used to have just two hours, right? Okay. Yeah. Yeah, who was there? I remember I was supposed to have been. I've been a cat open, he's working. Right. Is it good looking, I've seen it, it's also good, yeah. It was a safe spot to be at, and I don't see, you know, many of the ways. We used to, my place, you know, football club, looking for all teams, so.
They have, well, coaching is a kind of position, is a big position.
Okay.
That, I want kids right now to pick basketball.
Yeah.
Traps.
We're self-reasonable, man, but plus you, you know what I think, well, it. If you're in season, you haven't seen a free hack, so you can see his power. You just gotta scale back a way over there.
Right.
Yeah, not much. Of course, that's why we're beating brought in, it's very, but.
Right.
Yes, I made a text, I think, from your, like, you're gonna have, but right after you make the decision, or just kind of.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah.
And I won't go on and do it, but yeah, you know, make the plan?
Yeah.
Well, and, and, I don't know if you did the main one, boom, he didn't.
Ah, that's all.
Yeah, see, but I wasn't aware of it, so, um, he's busy, he's coaching, he's coaching, you know, so. But we'll have him, you know, probably talk to him both once of their own doing, um, then when that decision comes through, probably have him come down. He's a good guy, you can trust him, you know what I mean, so.
Huh? I think that's the, I think that's the, I think that's changed.
I know, it's true, but. It's the pleasure. I was.
I see. This is going.
Um.
I don't know. I see.
But I mean, it's a part of the, of the selection. And that's just, you need to be, so, so.
He's too much, what, he's too, that's it, I don't know.
More than three.
Yeah.
I usually like the two prior, it was awesome.
Yeah.
Great service.
Yeah.
They like, you know, super, more, and more.
Yeah, yeah, they want you to skate and date, I can't, I'm writing, but I, I guess, I'm doing, it was fun. It was fun, school, I think, like, so I first heard.
Last in the morning?
Yeah, and you just, it was much different, I thought, the first thing, you know, like.
I mean, third, as well. It's hard to, you know, options, you know, you're almost, to you, to you, now, you know, it's like.
No, I think a little older, that seemed, often, was that, those three. It's really, if you're going, if you're dropping off to compete, and it's kind of a story, for your, right? In surgery, it's usually, usually block off, if they, yeah, two years surgery, right? And then there's a white, it was kind of a, but, um, the boys go close, and then you start at fifth grade, you have ten, fifteen others. Or hopefully, or, I mean, kids can come back if they want it. And you get a text, and you check in, you get a text, and you check, they can come though, if they need, if they want. So, you know, a lot of freedom, rock there, where they have a whole lot of libraries, and, yeah, and, and my class, they do. Well, yeah, yeah, but it's nice to have, I mean, you want to go there. Yeah.
I mean, you should probably share this stuff with each other.
Yeah, like, you know, hang out with other, they kind of, but they're fun, they don't, you know, they play basketball, and.
Well, they like, they're. Those are those career choices.
So, see, there's a, you know, you kind of. They, you know, they can learn, they can walk, and they can skip around, like, it's, um, so.
Really, I was seeing, I was watching.
And.
That's what you can do, you know, just, you know, just, you know, the area. There's one. Are you there?
For a bit? No, it's just the issue, I was just curious what the order was. No? Just wanted to be heard this. I think it's called the comment section.
There's two, there's one for.
Four out there. Yeah, it's in general.
Yeah, so they have all the comments, you know, in general.
There's the variant, or, just call the comment section. Call the, it's a question, places to go, yeah.
We can just scroll to that agenda, we have more questions, I think. Yeah, I think it was. It's good to have a family, you know, you have a family, you have a family, you have, you have, you have. And, and, and. I'm looking to ask for a chance.
I can do that for you.
No.
You're welcome.
Yeah, they have turned up.
How many is that?
That is... You want to get them? So you don't have to, so you don't have to...
So do you... What's your question?
I don't know, she's...
I'll leave you first.
Fine, thank you. Fine, we'll go over there. You want to just say?
Do we have a presentation?
No presentation.
Okay. Uh, so now we're just going to go to public comment for agenda items. If we have people from the public who want to speak on items of the agenda tonight, um, they could come and sit at this table. No? Okay. We have warrants, line item transfers.
We have warrants.
Warrants on the table, you guys are...
And we do have a couple of line item transfers. One again is the transfer of the $200 from the extended day to take for the rental for our extended day program. Another request, um... From the business office, request for a transfer of $400 from the spent summer program salaries to spent travel expenses. This transfer is going to fund chaperone expenses for a special education student for the concert trip in Philadelphia in April.
The one that's... The question about the new pickup, or just the special?
This, no. This is for, to support special education students attending this.
Okay.
And we also have a request to move $1,501.58 from the new furniture equipment line to the reading supply line at the primary school. And this is to allow them to, um, purchase scholastic periodicals that will be used in all classrooms for reading, science, and social studies curriculum.
That's it? I'll take a motion to approve the three line item transfers as described by Dr. Burnham.
I'll make that motion to approve all three line item transfers as outlined by Dr. Burnham. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have minutes on the table from the workshop meeting of December 4th and the regular session meeting of December 18th. To approve, have you taken a look at those, were changes made? Are they all good?
I just had one, there was a typo.
A typo?
Um, on the, um, December 4th, minutes under new business, action B. Um, I think the word tree was supposed to be three. It said last tree, brand new. Last three policies were brand new. And instead it says last tree. So I just, it's just a typo.
So assuming that that's...
Right, once we correct that.
I'm fine with it, other than that.
It would have been three.
Yeah, I figured.
That's where it is, policies.
Yeah, okay. So I'll take a motion to approve with the, um, change from tree to three.
Some moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Superintendent's report?
Very good report, Senator. With us tonight is the recording secretary of student committee. Susan Summers.
Where's she hiding?
She's back there right now.
Uh, okay.
Hello.
Okay, welcome.
So Susan is a resident of Leonardburg. She has two sons that attend from one of her public schools. She started by earning her degree in telecommunications from Michigan State University. She worked as an executive secretary for Reed Business Information, supporting the group vice president. It was here that she learned the skills of organization, efficiency, and focus. And recently, she has held the position of communications coordinator, where she was responsible for all in-house and outside communications, including social media. She feels that the recording secretary position was just what she was looking for in terms of a part-time position in order to continue to have a work-life balance. So we, we welcome Susan to the position and am very happy to have her aboard.
Welcome.
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 That's it?
That's it.
That's your report?
Well, we have been, um, on vacation.
I know.
And there's not a lot, not a lot to report.
Um, and we, um, our student rep is not present. So we don't have a student rep report unless you got an email?
I did not.
Okay. Um, new business, we have the coach's handbook. Mr. Banal.
Hi.
Hi, hi.
Happy to be here.
So I put together a little of the summer, um, working on. I, I know earlier in the year, there was, um, the captain handbook and the athletic handbook. And part of that also was trying to develop a coach's handbook to kind of gear and give, you know, a little bit of guidelines and some expertise in place for the athletes' parents and captains. And who felt that, putting after their coaches, that that was also a necessity. There's nothing like that before in the history. So to the best of my ability, I tried to come up with, um, expectations about the coaches' conference. So it's, it's somewhat of an idea of what we are expecting of them to follow and how to prepare them for, you know, to expect a different level of play, et cetera, et cetera, so that they have something to fall back on and, and say that, oh, I didn't know that. I was supposed to do this, or this was supposed to happen. So at least now they have it, it's all in front right away. So that they know what they're expecting and so on and so forth. A bigger future too is that with all these, just like the captain handbook and the athletic handbook and the coach's handbook, they're, they're living documents. So each year, I plan on working with the organization and the feedback to review, um, to either add or delete so that we can keep improving and including these, um, you know, the whole ideas that possibly have spread out. And that seems, seems like a perfect, um, good one. I was thinking about doing, this is, this is more of a starting point. Um, with the coach's handbook than anything. Where, like I said, we're getting, we're coming from nothing. So I'm sure there are things that can be edited, adjusted, or included upon there. Like I said, it's one, I felt there was, there needed something to stop there. So.
No, I think it's good, James. I think you did a really good job. I think that, I'm looking for the questions that I had in regard to the questions. I think this section is removed. I can't find the swing player section.
She, oh, I don't have, I apologize.
I didn't print a cold coffee because of this wedding.
No, I mean, the section where you, the minutes are in here.
I know it wasn't that.
It was, I don't see it any longer. Do you, Wendy?
I'm going back out. I don't see it in there anymore.
But I couldn't hear what you were looking for.
Swing players.
Swing players.
Swing players.
Yeah, there's no match of the swing in the document.
I'm looking.
I go online, I don't know if it was in there, it was underneath, I forget exactly where it was underneath, but it specifically went through there.
And you had seen it because you had questions about it.
Right, but it's not here. It's not been incorporated.
Do you remember what section that was in?
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
No, it was just a little, oh, wait, there it is. Please note, the swing player can play an equivalent of a game. So is that going, that, I, that was the que, I had multiple questions about the role of swing players, et cetera, et cetera. And I was hoping that this would be addressed in the new, addressed in the handbook? The role of the swing player?
Okay.
Um, did you forward?
He didn't have time.
Okay.
I didn't get it to him enough.
Okay. Um, because, um... What I witnessed in our sporting events is that different coaches handle swing players in different ways. And, um, I think it's very broad and expectations are not very, always very clear when it comes to student athletes and the role of a swing player. And I don't know that there is any need for swing players unless you have a small team size to help so that you can, um, have two teams, like JV team and a varsity team. I've only ever watched other schools, when they don't have enough players, use swing players. And I've watched now for three different seasons, different players use multiple and different ways, where some swing players got no playtime, some swing players got 60 minutes. Some swing players' parents complained that their students didn't get the entire 60 minutes. And then they were getting 60 minutes of playtime when other players were not getting any playtime. So I just want to make sure that that is taken care of and clearly articulated in this, for the coaches, in that the use of swing players is consistent across the board in our, all of our athletics. So that, um, it's equitable for student athletes. So that one is not putting in all of the work and in the same position as the swing player who's then pulled up and they're standing on the sideline their entire sport season. Especially if we have the numbers to, to field two separate teams. So, did he, did you also forward my other question?
Yes.
Okay, so he hasn't had time to look at that either?
Did you have a chance to review the questions?
As I walked in.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay, so I had questions in regard to, um... I'm, I'm going to find the section.
Can I jump in?
Yeah, definitely.
So just as a coach too, uh, I've seen the, the swing players happen all the time too. And I think it's, it's definitely a challenge. I think parents are always gonna, there's always going to be parents who are going to complain about playing time. Um, but I think it is important to allow younger players those opportunities to, say, sit with the varsity. When the varsity team has a weaker team that they're playing, they can get that experience. And then some of the tougher teams and games, some of those players aren't going to see much action. I think when we look at that varsity level, they're playing to win. And when we look at that JV level and middle school, they're playing to get that experience and they're going to see that playing time. But we shouldn't see students having to do double duty, having to do games at JV and games at varsity, and practices with JV, and then practices after. Because students have academics to worry about and other things that they have to take care of.
But we, and what we've been watching, what we've been seeing is that there are students playing in both games when it's not really necessary.
Exactly.
And that is, that's what's upsetting and troubling. And then you see other students not being played. not being played at all on a varsity level team, and they're on varsity, but they're not being played, and the swing player is. And so I feel like there's inconsistency in our coaching staff, and also the guidelines are not there. They're just not there.
And I think that opens it up to why we're doing those surveys, that we're incorporating the surveys too, from the players, so they can give feedback to the administration.
Right.
And that's, that was something in evaluation of coaches that, you know, I was thinking about, they do it internally at the academic level to have, to have a survey that a student could take at home, not pressure, not handwritten, where they could feel like if I write something, they might recognize my writing, a completely anonymous way to give an evaluation of their season. Just when you're thinking about a coach evaluation...
But he had, he has done that.
I was going to say, James, you talked about that.
He definitely did that.
Share that in the public.
And on all honesty, they also think they can trace it back on the devices. So they're not going to be honest at all in evaluation. So I don't know how you get a kid to be honest when they think they'll recognize their handwriting, or they're going to trace it back to their...
IP.
Their IP address. They're just that way, that's the way they think.
But it's been utilized, but I didn't notice it in evaluation of coaches. So I didn't know if that was something that...
That's very new.
Okay.
So here's the distinction there. That does give feedback to the AD, feedback that he can review with coaches, but it's not evaluative. And that's, we have to make that distinction, because the coach stipends are part of the LEA contract. So if there's going to be an evaluation tool for the coaches, that would have to be negotiated.
Got it.
No, I think if anything, the athletic director can use that to help the coach improve. It's all about improving and getting better.
Oh, agreed, yeah. So the other questions I had were in regard to the code of ethics, but I can't even pick them for a little bit. Hold on. Oh, okay, so let me find it. I don't see it in here.
Page two?
No, be positive role models. Nope. Oh, I have to find my email. Oh wait, refrain from directing harassing, humiliating, embarrassing, or condescending comments to team members or actions that are harassing, humiliating, embarrassing, or condescending. That is in, coaches shall serve as positive role models for their players. Then you go to, coaches shall encourage student athletes to make good, paying good grades. Yes, we got that. Then there was six, coaches shall always be professional. Do not discuss specific students with others. Constructive feedback should be given to players in a confidential manner. I'm just wondering how you are going to monitor that, and when you have complaints that that has happened, how are you going to hold coaches accountable?
But this part, when I did get this question, I started to think about it, and I thought more of kind of relating it to if there's, trying to be consistent anyways with some words of the MIA, like if there's a supposed violation after conducting an investigation, if it is found out to be true, then, I don't know the specifics.
Right, so, yeah.
But there would be, your first offense would be X.
Okay.
Your second offense, if something were to continue, would be X in, yeah.
Okay.
Like something of that nature, and I apologize that there wasn't, but it was a very, very valid point when there, because I, when I read it, I was like, oh yeah, that makes sense. Because now they, they have the guidelines, but if they don't follow those...
How do you hold them accountable for that?
Correct, and, so I was trying to think of a way, while you guys were in there.
Oh.
Well, I feel that, also that would go under the evaluation of the coaches.
But then they're not, okay, we can't, they're under contract, so we can't actually evaluate them in that sense of that evaluation process unless we negotiate it as part of their contract.
So aren't the coaches stipends, annual stipends that they have to apply for every year?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So at the end, it would have to be at the end of the, each year they still have to apply for the job?
Yes, yes, and that's what my, I wondered if this has, if this happens, and you know of a coach that does this, and you've heard that they've done, done this, had, have, had instances like this, why would you hire them back?
Exactly, you wouldn't have to.
Exactly. Thank you, Brian.
I just had a really very simple question that I'm sure you can answer very easily. The feeder program connection under additional responsibilities of head coaches, it said to contact middle schools and youth programs in Nashua about clinics and/or joint practices. I thought Nashua was kind of far. I wondered if that was Neshova. Because it did seem like far away, I just wasn't sure what was going on in Nashua.
In the midst of creating this, I was trying to get, I not only pulled from ones that I had developed before, but I was looking at other districts as well. So in the midst of, I saw all this.
Oh, it was a copy, okay, that's a typo. I couldn't figure out what was going on in Nashua that we dragged the kids all the way there. Okay, thanks.
Does anyone else have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I think it's a good first, first step in providing something, some guidance that wasn't there. I listened to you all who have either children who have been playing the sports and a fellow coach, you brought up a lot of things I hadn't thought about.
Right.
So, good first step.
Good job. Definitely.
A few more tweaks and it would be, it'll be...
I think, you know, just regarding with swing players and just players in general and playing time, you know, as a former coach, and I'm sure, Brian, you understand as a coach, the biggest thing that I try to put across, that I try to, the best thing I try to hit across to parents, players, and coaches, is that it's not a freshman JV and varsity team. We've now just individualized those things. It is a program. And if people understand the concept of a program, what's best, that the moves and decisions that are going to be best for that program, that's ultimately, in theory anyways, in hope, is what the coach is going to make. So those moves of a person moving down or a person moving up, ultimately their decisions is to make for something better for a scenario, something like that, to improve the program, not just to improve that individual team, because we're not, we shouldn't treat them as an individual team. It is a, it is a program. And you want the whole program to be successful, and things that either go one way or another way, the whole program, that's how, it should be one constant flow.
I agree, but I also think that coaches have the potential to really affect student athletes in both a positive and a very negative way. And when they don't clearly communicate with their players, there are confusions that happen, bad feelings between players, and that does not make for a good program.
Oh, absolutely. And communication, just as I...
And it doesn't happen now. So I think that your role as athletic director is to ensure that going forward, these communications happen between the coaches, the players, and the parents involved. So that on the sidelines, when you're watching and witnessing a game and these things transpire, there are no questions about what just happened.
And I think it's really important too, that we make sure that the evaluation process is done.
Yeah.
Pretty soon after that season ends, make sure that you have that time to have those evaluations, talk to those coaches, let them know where they can improve, and if their improvements aren't being made, that we make those tough decisions if we need to.
Right.
Along with the principal.
Right, agreed.
So we'll take this as a first draft, have your feedback, look to include an expanded section on swing players, some guidelines there, function, purpose, that kind of a thing, as well as some sort of language around consequences, not formal guidelines.
I think that...
And make that Nashua edit.
Yeah, Nashua, Lunenburg.
Something exciting going on.
Local.
Okay, so you'll work on those and bring it back.
Yeah, that was really, it's really great though, to see it all ran down.
Very well.
Just like all your other handbook. Nice to have any writing.
Do we need a motion to table? Does that make sense or no?
I don't think so. Do you think we need a motion to bring it back?
Any action? Just put it back in the agenda?
Yeah. What do you think? We're not approving it.
Right, you can maybe just accept it as a first draft, and a re-burned draft would come back at a future date.
Okay, you want to...
Make a motion to accept the first draft?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thank you. Oh, now you have the winter sports report. Sorry, I forgot about that.
I do apologize that I wasn't able to be here in December. I had strep throat, so I didn't want to get anybody...
We don't want that.
Sick, cold holidays. But as you can see, the winter participation numbers are pretty great. There is one change that I do need to inform everybody of, our swimming co-op that we started last year.
Yeah.
With Leominster High School. The first day of tri-lets, Pittsburgh State closed their pool.
What?
Yeah, it's not, there's a lot around that.
Spring bowling, we were able to find another school to co-op with, Neshova graciously took us on. However, for the two swimmers, or the swimmer and diver that we had, one of them did practice in Sudbury. So the distance was too far for one of the swimmers, and the diver also competes for, she's on a diving club or...
Yeah, like in Harvard or something?
And the practice times conflicted with each other, so she made the decision to stay with her club team, which is understandable. Leominster High is looking for next year as alternative places to start their program, start the program back up again.
All right.
So it was just a last minute thing that all of a sudden happened in front of a lot of schools. And alert, and a lot of other schools graciously helped out and tried to take the other schools on board. So those numbers are in this, but obviously...
Now they're not.
Now they're, they're not. I can't say that one, the swimmer that didn't, couldn't make the practice to Sudbury, he actually switched over to track.
Oh, there you go.
So, do you send?
Yeah.
The middle school participation for the first year basketball program, we have 27 kids last year that weren't doing anything in the first time that are now doing something.
Well, they were doing something, just the other program.
Right, but now they're doing something under us, which is, which is great. And the rest of the numbers are pretty consistent. We didn't vary too much from last year, we're pretty close to the same numbers that we did have. And the teams are off to, a couple of them slow starts, I just came from the track meet prior to this, we were doing all the events that I did see, there's a couple running events, a couple throwing events, the girls have won the throwing events. Lauren Wong had won her two mile, Michael Eva had won his two mile, so we were doing well there. And Hissaki, they're actually playing right now as well, they were winning, at the last time I checked, it was five, three.
Ooh.
So.
Good.
Yes.
It's all good. Okay, have any, any questions, anybody else?
No.
No, sounds good.
Yeah.
Make a motion to accept the winter sport report?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Stephen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we have the extended day early learning center update and recommendations for the summer program. Welcome, can you kind of come up there?
Yeah.
Okay. Hello, Mrs. Perry, I miss this.
Lou.
Hello.
Nothing yet. You want to turn, you guys?
You could turn, turn and take a look at it.
The slides, but you can turn the table. You can turn the table.
Turn the table. Turn the table parallel to the chairs, perhaps?
What's your best angle?
Well, parallel to the chairs.
Good.
Heather, how about, parallel to the chairs?
Yeah, they're going to put the camera on the screen anyway.
Yeah, you put the camera on the screen.
Tilt the table.
Yeah, tilt the table, yeah.
There you go.
That way you guys can see it.
Little more, there you go.
Good?
One of the wheels is locked.
Ready? Okay, so basically this is our 1920, at the current enrollment. Our morning, Monday through Friday, you can see the first column is what's actually registered in the program. The second is attended on various days. This is only a week's numbers, but this varies depending on if there's any new dates. And the third column is the staffing with the children, and as you can see, it's all compliance to the staff child ratios. The afternoon is the same, are registered as our first column of students, second attended on a various day. Another example, yesterday we had 100 come through, that was the day of our three. So this is just an example of what happened the afternoon, third column staffing. So at this current time, we do have 201 registered students altogether. Okay, thank you, Stone, Housestone Gravel for their sandcar sandbox, which is wonderful. This is our summer picture, teachers play swim here, we take the kids, pumpkin thing, we went to the Chunky Theater and to see a private viewing of a show for just our program. We've been to Fenway Park, so we do know numerous things over the summer. This is our early learning center. For our preschoolers in town, while we have students in the school, we run a early learning center from 8:30 to 2:30 every day. So you can see we do have children all day long, no breaks. We eat with the children, we snack with the children, we never get out of our home. And then this is our extended day program, early, morning, after. We have a game room that, just maybe, do you want to tell them what's in the game room? On the game room, we have pool tables, we have pool stall, we have a RE program, they do the Just Dance, they absolutely love it, enjoy it, to watch them, we score, they have all the water part in that room, we can play table. So this is the kids' group, and often they're, the girls in the middle, the kids on the end by the board, they're in the craft room, doing crafts. Now here we are, and I'm in contact with what we did with the implementation of the change that we did this year. The hiring nurse, we felt, you know, always a very good improvement, I'm going to say, to the program. I really like them, I, it worked out really, really fantastic the last four and a half months of school, it's been running very smoothly after we got through those bumps in the road in the beginning of the school year. So the hiring nurse was great, provides medical care to students in addition to the program with our students. The block building, it's a lot simpler format, for me, I'm saying it's very, what am I going to say, it's simpler, reliable, revenue and risk stability for the program. The location is our biggest one, and if you probably don't know from the past, we have more space, more student activities indoor, community involvement, community involvement is a big one, you know, we've gone to the center of town, the library, Dustin's in the summer utilizing our program with programs that they do. They also have, Ms. Debbie does a story hour with our early learning center every Wednesday morning, which is wonderful. We've taken trips to the bank, to the Eagle House, we go and have breakfast with the seniors. Yep, we walk them to Conrad's for ice cream, we go to Marshall Park for ball games and picnic. So it's really a great community involved spot for us to be in. A lot of outdoor activities as well, we have sandbox, we've go, go sledding this winter, we've done gardens in the past, it's my garden donated vegetables for us, the kids have salads one year, they eat lettuce and tomatoes, so it's really a great, great, great location compared to where we were. Student enrollment cap, definitely define staff room, find safety for all students, and programmatic stability in the same as for that schedule. I think it's really, when you cap it all together, I think it's really working out well. I like all the changes that are in, and I don't recommend any more changes for that coming here with these situations right here. Okay, so for the summer sessions, we are, we'll be running in fifth full weeks, Monday, July 6th, and Friday, August 14th. 6th to Friday, August 14th. Registrations will be weekly, not daily. The reason for this is that it's going to make it run more smoothly and consistency with the numbers and the staffing. I feel like on the single days, when you drive the numbers up, it sometimes can get hard to recruit staff and retain staff because not only looking for those hiring numbers. So it's easier to do a week's schedule versus inconsistent. One of the biggest thing would be the field trip days. I have families who just send their kids on the field trip days, which drives our numbers up. And if staff aren't required to work, then you might not get staff to be able to attend those field trips because now we're not, now we won't have our staff to chop the ratio numbers either. So it's just really for safety purposes too, so we can be able to plan our trips. I also feel like, you know, we run a quality program, we want to keep that quality program how they camp week. And when we take that away, I feel like it now is just back to an extended day program. And I want people to think that, you know, we do seem to be sort of field trips to incorporate that theme, to make it more of a fun, you know, not that it's a fun setting now, but I think it's just different from our everyday extended day program. You know, you're going to set to a schedule, and students will only attend these programs, especially may attend camp meals, special costs for everything like that. So then once again, here's our hours that we'll offer, 9:00 to 3:00 at 1:00, 6:00 AM hours, 2 hours for $10 extended hours, 3 to 5:00 at 12:50. Again, I just like the feeling of being in a camp themed week with field trips, so that we can staff afford and keep our staff ratio and, you know, easier on staff.
Question for you, when you're talking about per week, is it, they need to commit to the whole six weeks or is it
No, they don't
Individual weeks.
They don't commit to the whole six weeks. It's just a week at a time because we want to be able to staff, we want to be able to plan, we want to be able to get the activities, we want to be able, you know, plan our field trips. Some field trips depend on numbers, you know, they have a maximum, they have a minimum. And so our numbers will be driven, so to be able to plan that.
Thank you.
2020 extended day program recommendations, so you all should do the first day school and the last day school. If you'd like to maintain your own capital 125, I feel like that's working out well. Continue to be on a movement to a schedule, maintain current rates, continue flexibility, and continue to rent over five classrooms. Every year's going to be different, enrollment changes year to year. So if we feel like we don't get that 125 students, we could, you know, go down. We don't get, we don't need to necessarily rent a five classroom, we could go down to four classrooms, right now the five classrooms working well with five numbers.
Can I ask a question about that one? So you had mentioned earlier there was 201 registered. Would that go down to 125 registered or is that mixed to get the 201?
No, it's mixed, morning, afternoon, that's our total registrations between the attendance and the 125.
And each day would be maxed at 125?
Yeah.
Thank you.
The recommendations would be the program, well, this already, we already take that Thanksgiving break, which is great, we already take the new recommendation would be the two full day, professional days, Tuesday, November 3rd and Friday, March 12th, so that we could attend the workshops because where are the kids all day we can't attend. And if we open the programs and we don't have a director or coordinator on site to run the program. And I think it's important to have them on site if they're not there. And then it would always be the same, February equals qualification week, but staying early leaves states the state the same. So no changes are recommended at this time. The ELC grades are briefly approved, AM session for the community every day, first session AM and PM, lunch session after Thanksgiving. Most of that early learning center rates for this coming school year.
So I want to talk about our voucher program. We've got 11, excuse me, 10 families in Lomis that participate in the state voucher program, that assist them for daycare through the extended day program, through the Department of Early Education and Care Department. They've changed the regulations for our programs and they're treating our extended day program like a daycare program. So with that includes additional training and some facility changes, which I think would have significant impact on whether or not you want to move toward that and accept those vouchers. So we've got, this impacts 10 families. And I'm going to, we're recommending through the business office that we don't comply with the new regulations and get out of the voucher program. But to assist those 10 families is that we still honor the vouchers that the state will give them and the rates that the state establishes for those 10 families until the kids basically age out. And as long as they remain eligible and they don't move out of Lomis, is that we would still maintain them as participants in the extended day program at their reduced rate. So that, so this slide basically indicates that that, what I'm recommending is that it is immediate, so we're not accepting any families, we're just, we're capping it at the 10 right now. And then starting next year is that we still maintain those 11 kids in the extended day program as long as those families remain eligible. So I will say, long term, I would like to see that maybe we open this up again in the future. Once there's some stability as far as where this extended day program is going to be in the long term, is there potential rehabilitation that's coming to the Passios building? Not really sure where we're going to stand with that and doing any significant investment in that building, where we're not really sure where the program is going to be long term, program wise. Now, I just want to say that maybe dealing with this issue, if the extended day program was still at the primary entry hub, we'd still have to comply with that. So it has nothing to do with the facility that they're in right now. It's just a problematic change for the voucher. And I wanted to assure you that we've got highly trained staff there that responds to students' needs and our facility is very safe and it meets all local laws and requirements. So I'm requesting that you consider this a recommendation moving forward.
So I like the idea that you grandfathered in those students with those needs. One idea that I've just, just based off of that, I was thinking whether this would be linked, you could do something like a free and reduced lunch kind of fee where it's a lower fee for those kind of families? Maybe that kind of connection like they do in sports, like we had done earlier with the sports teams? I don't know if that would be a possibility?
It was, we looked into that to try to make it easy, but the qualifications and the eligibility is different. So there's different factors.
Different funding and
I considered that. And that was like, we were going to go with that and then we researched it a little bit more. And we just, we don't want to give anyone a benefit, an unfair benefit in this town over somebody else. So we're just kind of keeping that eligibility requirement with that state agency as a guide moving forward for these 10 families.
Thank you.
Do you have action you want us to approve?
We think you can have some discussion on it, but I think, you know, perhaps you want to table it until
The next meeting?
The next meeting for final approval?
Right.
I can say that when I pushed this information out to families ahead of this meeting, I did hear from one parent. I think perhaps you had a question from another one, but there hasn't been a lot of feedback back from families. So perhaps to allow a little bit more time for them to process some of this and the impact for themselves and their families.
The timeline supports it, definitely. More time to
Right, because we want to be cognizant of giving as much time as possible as well. So hopefully, if this has been pushed out, you know, by the time we meet again, several weeks would be enough time for someone to reach out with questions or concerns.
Right. I think in terms of timeliness, as you heard me say at the last meeting, the intention is to have all registrations for summertime and for next year's academic programs, whether that be the extended day, the early learning center, preschool, kindergarten, those will be in February. So it would be helpful, I think, for a decision to be made relative to the program and the changes, so that families know when they're registering, what they're registering for and what that impact for their family would be as they're registering. So I think if we could
The next meeting?
Approve at the next meeting, that would be helpful.
Is there more to this presentation or is this the last?
That was it.
Slide.
That was it.
Tammy, I just wanted to say that I've heard great things, that you do an amazing job. I did have a couple of questions. You had mentioned again earlier the 201 registered altogether. I didn't know if there was any, if you followed any trends, what was that compared to, say, last year? I didn't know if you had last year's numbers?
It is low because we eliminated the no as needed. So that was a big one. You know, we had, we would have close to like probably 300.
Okay.
So that no as needed really was a big change for us this year because we've always hated that.
And then on the earlier slide, you had mentioned what kind of the average day number of students would be. I wondered, looking at like the maximum number of students that you got in a particular same month, rather than following that trend to see how many you, at most, students you had a day? That might be useful information to follow for staffing purposes?
Right.
Versus how many registered versus
And how many used it.
Yeah, max per day.
So the various attendings you're asking about?
Yes.
Yeah, I just took that off of a given week, just so that I gave you, like, to give you guys an idea of how many people come to the early, early morning, morning, afternoon, whatever.
And, yeah, and the activities sound awesome. I didn't know if you accepted any donations, were there any needs that the community could give back to you? I noticed the Wii games, I was like, I have some Wii games that maybe could donate.
Yeah, we do, we do, we'll accept donations, actually. We did have a family, actually she works for me, the Mola family, will be donating a full-size pool table, we're picking it up tomorrow.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yes, we will have, we'll still have tabletop pool table, but we'll have a full-size pool table in the morning.
Is there any specific needs that you're looking for, for donations that the public would need to know?
Right now, we're good, we always just take glue sticks.
Glue sticks? Was that what you said? Glue sticks? Tissues?
Glue sticks and tissues, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tammy, I have a question. You said that when we were looking last year with the changes to the program and all, and there was some discussion about, you know, people that came only three days or two days or whatever, how has that patched together? Has that worked well?
It is, so we took those full-time people, you know, and put them into the database and then the people part-time, you know, that's why we increased our numbers to 125, so we could have, take all of the registrations with those part-time days. Otherwise, those part-time parents would not have had a spot.
Wouldn't have had a spot.
If we didn't increase our numbers and take on an extra room to support the families. So we did, that's why we did increase our numbers, because it was originally kept for 125.
Now, as I listen to what you said, the reason why you can't do like three days during the summer is because of the programmatic piece? Because if it worked during the winter number-wise
Right.
It doesn't work in the summer number-wise or is it the programming?
It's the, I think it's the programming, it's the numbers, it's the staffing, it's a lot less, it is a lot less. I'm just, I'm looking to have a camp week, it's just, because it's themed and it's just, I feel sometimes I just, basically, you know, I'm just looking for stability, you know, that type of stuff, so we can consistently have our numbers to our children and our staff ratios to maintain safety. And if we have parents that come on a certain date to drive us towards numbers, I might have a hard time with staff to answer that. Getting it to only for one day is going to be hard to keep that staff, knowing that they might only come this day because our members are hired on this particular day.
Right, it's tough, tough to get employees when you go, yeah, I got three days to give you in the summer and the employee says, I need a different job than that.
Right, right.
And when you're paying minimum wage, it's not always, you know what I mean? Workers aren't coming out of the woodwork for that. Most camp programs run this way. I mean, as great as it would be to go
Camp programs do.
You know, and where this is
That's why we're asking about programming.
A camp, yeah.
Does it, does the Boys and Girls Club run this way?
By week.
By week?
Well, they'll do the whole program and then they'll do separate blocks.
Right.
Three-week blocks? And then it's, you can do single weeks there, but it's higher rate on a single week.
Okay.
You get your best rate during the whole summer there. So, I mean, very typical with local
Right.
camps to run in this fashion. And, and the pricing on this camp is incre, what you're, what you get is incredible considering what, you know
Yeah.
other local summer camps cost, so.
I have one of those
It's less than the Boys and Girls Club, that's for sure.
Some of their
Area camps?
Oh, yeah.
And what their hours are and what their cost is.
Significantly, significantly different.
Can you share a little bit?
What?
Yeah, can you share a little?
No.
Come on.
Yes, of course.
I know the first time I did a summer camp, we went to the Y and it was
These are just taken off the computer, so
I was going to say.
Yeah.
If there's errors, I apologize. And some of them may be from last year that they haven't been activated.
Okay. Camp Low is on the, is it local, is that Lancaster?
Yeah, it's Lancaster, yeah.
I just did a few, just to get a
No, I wanted to see how local they were.
And the, yeah, that's where I went because I had no idea where I was going. And that's the per week price, 230.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
And some of them are different, some of them are, you know, up to $330 a week depending on what you choose for your child to have for a themed program.
Right, sure.
We certainly offer swimming, which of course we don't do, you know, camp counselor training and stuff like that, which we of course don't let happen. Yeah, the prices are
And St. Boniface is in here, but in all fairness, they're, they're daycare running that. So you will, if people are looking at that, you know, it's not a fair comparison that you could do daily there or two days or three days because it is, it is year-round daycare and they may, you know, have sort of themed weeks in the summer and things like that, but
And the age requirement has got to be totally different. It's a daycare. What is
Yeah, they age out at five.
Yeah.
Thank you.
About my deliberation, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. A draft school committee, the school calendar for 2020, 2021.
Did we need to take action on the extended day?
We are, we're tabling
We tabled it till next, no. Yeah, we're going to, it's on, I'm going to put it on the calendar, the next, the January, yes.
Sounds good.
Okay. Where is that? Where is that?
I mean, I all added up.
It does somehow magically.
Does it? I can't find
I made sure, yeah.
I did. The last three years I've, or two years.
Where's my calendar?
Over many it's been. It's NBA.
I did, because the last three years, or two years, however many it's been. It's NBA, MBP.
Oh, there it is, got it, thank you. It went away, I have to look it up all the time. So, are there any big changes?
No, I would say that the only difference this year in terms of selection of dates for professional development, the professional development committee is making the recommendation for the two full-day dates that you see in this calendar. They would like to continue with the model of professional development that we implemented this year with a conference model. We are looking to keep the election day in November as a professional development day. It gives us an opportunity to collaborate with area districts, because many districts also have election day as a professional development day.
This one's a big election.
This is a big election. So it makes sense for us not to have the students in on that day, this, this coming year in particular. They also agreed that the half-days could be more building-based, so that the principals could plan the professional development that might be on the half-days. So those dates were recommended by the instructional leadership team, the two half-days, the half-days for professional development.
Professional development, okay.
They did take a look at the dates that are on there as well, for the nature's classroom trip, the Washington DC trip, graduation.
Yeah, I was just going to look at those dates.
There's another change relative to parent-teacher conferences. So we're staying with the half-day model, an early release, two separate dates for the middle high school and then the primary and Turkey Hill. And the only shift really is that the primary school would like to do their evening parent conferences on the same day as their release. So they would have afternoon sessions and evening sessions on the same date. That would actually be beneficial to parents who have students at both the primary and the Turkey Hill, because now it gives a little bit more flexibility for parents who are trying to schedule conferences in two buildings, right?
Yep.
Okay, right, you have evening opportunities on two different dates.
Right.
So we, we'd like to try that and see how that works. It's also potentially beneficial to any of our staff at those schools who have children at a different school.
Yeah, I was looking at it, comparing to our, our guidelines for calendar development, and it meets all the criteria. I don't have any feedback other than...
Half-days are half, there's not a lot of half-days going into February, March, April, May.
Well, the other thing that they looked at relative to the professional development days, they, they occur every other month. There's a professional development day every other day.
In the beginning of the year, and then one in March, right?
Yeah, there's a full PD in March.
There's one in January, there's one in March.
We're out late.
We are very, yeah.
It's a late year, let's hope for light snow days.
It's good to me.
Do you want us to...
I think if you don't have any concerns with it, I think that you could...
And keeping the DC trip, that's the other thing I noticed, that...
It's too early to tell before, because they haven't taken the trip that week yet this year.
Yep.
But based on the same rationale, right, they're planning for it.
Before the...
Before the...
Absolutely, yep.
Do you want us to approve it?
If you feel comfortable with it.
I'd make a motion to accept the draft of school calendar 2020, 2021.
Second.
Seconded?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that way we can get this out to parents who plan.
You can post this on the website?
We've got some third readings to do.
We've got a lot of third readings to do.
Okay.
A whole lot of readings.
Oh, my, oh, old business.
Get your reading glasses out.
Second reading, we can do the second reading quickly, right?
Oh, my God.
Okay, policy people, that's you two.
Yep.
I'm leaving it to you guys.
Okay, well, we're...
Hold on, we haven't dealt with second reading yet.
Yeah, second reading, we're going to take 1801 off.
Taking 1801?
Yeah.
Okay.
That should have come off already.
Okay.
Yeah.
So waive, second reading for policy, 3102, financial reports and statements. Thirty, well, I'll go in order of the agenda. 3306 is invent fiscal management non-instructional operations for inventory, we're striking that as a policy. 3401, fiscal management non-instructional operations, purchasing and purchasing authority, we're changing some language there. Fiscal management non-instructional operation payment procedures, 3402. Fiscal management non-instructional operations, depository of funds and authorized signatures, Fiscal management and non-instructional operations, insufficient funds, negative balance, 3701.01. Go back to 3000, appendix A, has to do with fiscal management non-instructional operations, school bus information booklet, we're striking that as in its entirety. And 3203.01 is fiscal management non-instructional operations, title 1, 2A and 5A grants, or 4A grants, sorry. So I would make a move that we waive the second reading for all of those.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And all of these can be found on the website?
There's also hard copies up there of second and third readings. Yep.
Third reading.
Want me to start, Jim?
Oh, sure, I usually...
So these are...
Third reading.
We will actually do the readings of these as, these are what we will consider.
Third reading, yeah. So you want to start?
To go into policy. So I'm going in order. The first policy for third reading is policy 1501 regarding public participation and school committee meetings. The school committee shall, when possible, solicit the advice and counsel of citizens in the planning and operations of the schools. Meetings shall be open to the public except when the committee votes to go into executive session as directed by chapter 303, Acts of 1975, sections 23A, 23B, and 23C, open meeting law. Any matter under the governance of the school committee may be placed on the agenda for consideration by the school committee by any citizen, subject to the following: except in emergencies, such requests shall be in writing and shall be received by the superintendent of schools at least seven days prior to the scheduled meeting. Except in emergencies, such requests shall be accompanied by a written statement to explain the subject matter to be brought before the committee. The inclusion of such items shall be at the discretion of the superintendent and committee chair.
Did we receive any feedback?
Yes.
On any, before I...
Yes.
Do 1503?
Sure.
1505.
1505, next.
Community relations, public participation, community involvement, and decision-making. The school committee endorses the concept that community participation in the affairs of the school is essential, yet the school department and the community are to maintain mutual confidence and respect and work together to improve the quality of education for students. It will exert every effort to identify the desires of the community and to be responsive through its actions to those desires. All citizens are encouraged to express ideas, concerns, and judgments about the schools to the school administration, staff, any appointed advisory boards, and the committee. The school committee reaffirms the rights, right of its citizenry to make recommendations to the school committee regarding improving Lunenburg schools. The school committee encourages collaborative participation and will weigh input in their decision-making. The final decision will be made by the school committee.
Policy 1601, the Education Reform Act of 1993, school councils. A school council is a representative, school-building-based committee comprised of the principal, teachers, parents, community members, and, at the secondary level, students required to be established pursuant to MGL 7159C. School councils' responsibilities. School councils are to advise the principals in, one, adopting educational goals for the school that are consistent with the local educational policies and statewide student performance standards; two, identifying the educational needs of students attending the school; three, reviewing the annual school budget; four, formulating a school improvement plan; five, annually reviewing and making recommendations regarding revising the student handbook at the secondary level. The school council shall have no authority over matters which are subject to MGL Chapter 150E of the General Laws, collective bargaining. School councils must follow the requirements of the open meeting law, MGL C39, S23A, 23B, 23C. The committee has the following authority over school councils: set district-wide performance standards and educational policies that building-level school policies that, is there a typo in that?
There's an extra dot.
There's an extra bullet.
There's the dot, oh, okay. Thank you. So let me read that again. Set school, set district-wide performance standards and educational policies that building-level school improvement plans must take into account. Review and improve building-level school improvement plans. Approve a representative process for the election of parent and teacher members of That went on. The school committee reserves the right slash option to develop guidelines that define the review process for the school improvement plan, set goals for racial and ethnic diversity on the council. The school committee may approve a council's school improvement plan. As a reviewing and approving authority, the school committee has the discretion to set its own schedule and timelines for the submission and review of the improvement plans. The school committee may approve or disapprove parts of a school improvement plan. The school committee has the final authority to approve improvement plans. Plans must be submitted to the committee for review and approval every year. The committee must review said plans within 30 days of receipt of said plan, otherwise the plan shall be deemed approved. School improvement plans must be submitted annually by November unless in any given year the committee sets some other date for submission.
3101 is fiscal management non-instructional operations, budget planning slash schedule. The major portion of income for the operation of the public schools is derived from local property taxes, and the school committee will attempt to protect the valid interest of the taxpayer. However, the first priority in the development of an annual budget will be the educational welfare of the children of our schools. The annual budget process will begin, will formally begin in late October with a general budget orientation session for all administrators. Coordinators, teachers, and other staff members are expected to submit their budget requests to principals in sufficient time for principals to review budget requests and submit their recommendation, recommended budgets to the superintendent before the second week in December. After his or her review, the superintendent will then present his or her budget recommendations to the school committee no later than the first scheduled meeting in February. Before completing their budget review and before voting a full budget, the school committee will conduct a public hearing on its budget in accordance with chapter 71, section 38 N of the General Laws. Such hearing shall be held not less than seven days after publication of a notice thereof in a newspaper having general circulation in the town.
And next up, policy 5102 regarding attendance enrollment policy, Lunenburg residents. One, a child who is of school age who resides in the town of Lunenburg may attend Lunenburg Public Schools. A child must be five years of age before September 1 of the year in which he or she enrolls, before he or she is eligible to enter kindergarten. A child must be six years of age before September 1 of the year in which he or she enrolls, before he or she is eligible to enter first grade. A child enrolling in Lunenburg Public Schools who has successfully completed a certified kindergarten program that meets the state requirements and mandates of an accredited kindergarten program from another community can be registered into first grade regardless of the age requirement as stated in number three. In addition, any child who moves into Lunenburg and is currently enrolled in a certified kindergarten program will be allowed to enroll in the Lunenburg kindergarten program even if he or she does not meet the age requirements. In accordance with state laws, the maximum age for compulsory school attendance is age 16. Under chapter 766, the public schools have a responsibility to provide educational services for a special needs student from age 3 to his or her 22nd birthday or until graduation from high school, whichever comes first. Students who are homeless, in foster care, or with military-connected families are immediately enrolled whether or not they can produce the registration information at the time of enrollment. Families that cannot produce documentation should contact the homeless liaison for the Lunenburg Public Schools.
5226, students and instruction educating homeless children and youth, foster care, and military students. As a recipient, the federal and public funding Lunenburg School District will ensure that educational programs for students which are homeless, in foster care, or in military families are administered in a non-discriminatory way. Lunenburg is committed to following the McKinney-Vento Homeless Act reauthorized in January 2002, ensuring the educational rights and protection of children and youths experiencing homelessness. The special services director is a designated liaison for students in homeless situations.
5226 dot one, homeless students enrollment rights and services. As required by law, the district will work with homeless children and youth and unaccompanied youth, collectively homeless students, as well as their families or legal guardians, to provide stability in school attendance and other services. Special attention will be given to ensuring the enrollment and attendance of homeless students not currently attending school. Homeless students will be provided district services for which they are eligible, including Head Start and comparable preschool programs. Title 1, similar state programs, special education, bilingual education, vocational and technical education programs, gifted and talented programs, school nutrition programs, summer programming, and extracurricular activities. Homeless students are defined as lacking a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence, including sharing the housing of other persons due to loss of housing, economic hardship, or similar reason; living in motels, hotels, trailer parks, or camp, camping grounds due to the lack of alternative adequate accommodations; living in emergency or transitional shelters; being abandoned in hospitals; living in public or private places not designed for or ordinarily used as regular sleeping accommodations for human beings; living in cars, parks, public spaces, abandoned buildings, substandard housing, transportation stations, or similar settings; and migratory children living in conditions described in the previous examples. Students remaining in schools of origin. It is presumed to be in the best interest of homeless students to remain in their schools of origin, i.e. the school that the student was attending at the time he or she became homeless, or the last school the student attended prior to becoming homeless. Homeless students may continue to attend their school of origin for as long as they remain homeless, or until the end of their academic... remain homeless, or until the end of their academic year in which they obtain permanent housing. For homeless students who complete the final grade level served by the school of origin, the term "school of origin" shall also include the receiving school in the same school district educating students at the next grade level. Homeless students are entitled to transportation comparable to that provided for all other students attending school in the district. The district will transport students who are sheltered or temporarily residing within the district to the student's school of origin. For homeless students attending a school of origin located outside the school district in which the student is sheltered or temporarily residing, the district in which the school of origin is located will coordinate with the district in which the student is sheltered or temporarily residing to provide the transportation services necessary for the student, and these districts will divide the cost equally. Formerly homeless students who find permanent housing mid-school year will continue to receive transportation services until the end of the school year. Students enrolling in the district where sheltered, where sheltered or temporarily residing. Parents or guardians may elect to enroll homeless students in the school district in which the student is sheltered or temporarily residing rather than having the student remain in the school of origin. Enrollment changes for homeless students should take place immediately. If homeless students are unable to provide written proof of their shelter or temporary residence in the district, the home liaison will work with the family seeking enrollment to determine homelessness. Information regarding a homeless student's living arrangement shall be considered a student education record and not directory information. Records containing information about the homeless student's living arrangement may not be disclosed without the consent of the parent or dissatisfaction of another student privacy-related exemption. If the student does not have immediate access to immunization records, the student shall be permitted to enroll under a personal exception. Students and families should be encouraged to obtain current immunization, current immunization records or immunizations as soon as possible, and the district liaison is directed to assist. Emergency contact information is required at the time of enrollment, consistent with district policies, including compliance with the state's address confidentiality program when necessary. After enrollment, the district will immediately request available records from the student's previous school. Attendance Rights by Living in Attendance Areas. Other student assignments or policies or intra and inter-district choice options are available to homeless families on the same terms as families who reside in the district. Accordingly, the district will provide transportation services to school in a manner comparable to the transportation provided for all of their students in the district. Dispute Resolution. If the district disagrees with a parent or guardian's decision to keep a student enrolled in the school of origin and considers enrollment in the district where the student is sheltered or temporarily residing to be in the student's best interest, the district will explain to the parent in writing and in a language the parent can understand the rationale for its determination and provide parent with written notice of their rights to appeal the district's determination to the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. During the pendency of any such appeal, the student should remain enrolled in the school selected by the parent or guardian, receiving transportation to school, and access to other available services and programs. The Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's Advisory on Homeless Education Assistance contains additional information about education, educating homeless students, and the appeal process. This advisory is available at the following link: Homeless Liaison. The superintendent shall designate an appropriate staff person to be the district's liaison for homeless students and their families. The district's liaison for homeless students and their families shall coordinate with local social service agencies that provide services to homeless students and youths and their families. Other school districts on issues of transportation and records, transfers, and student, and state and local housing agencies responsible for comprehensive housing affordability strategies. This coordination includes providing public notice of the educational rights of homeless students in locations such as schools, family shelters, and soup kitchens. The district's liaison will also review and recommend amendments to district policies that may act as barriers to the enrollment of homeless students. The liaison shall ensure district staff receive professional development and other support on issues involving homeless students. Legal references, the McKinney-Vento Act and Title I, Part A, as amended by the Every Student Succeeds Act of two thousand and fifteen.
Five-two-two-six dot two, Students and Instruction Education Opportunities for Children in Foster Care. The purpose of this policy is to ensure the educational stability of students in foster care. Educational stability has a lasting impact on students' academic achievement and well-being, and the school committee is committed to providing, to supporting all efforts to ensure that students in foster care have equal access to high-quality, stable educational experiences from preschool if offered through high school graduation. Irrespective of the location of a foster care placement, students in foster care will continue to attend their school of origin unless a collaborative decision-making process is determined to be in the student's best interest to enroll in and attend school in a district in which the student resides in foster care. Enrollments of students in the district where they reside in foster care will take place immediately upon such determination. The district has designated a point of contact for students in foster care. The district and the point of contact will collaborate with DCF to ensure that students can access transportation and the other services to which they may be entitled. Best Interest Determination. Decisions about whether a child, student in foster care should continue to attend the school of origin should be made collaboratively by the DCF, the student, as appropriate student's family and/or foster family, or, if different, the person authorized to make educational decisions on behalf of the student, the school and district of origin, and, when appropriate, the local district where the student is placed. Best Interest Determinations focus on the needs of each individual student and account for unique factors about the student and his or her foster care placement. Every effort should be made to reach agreement regarding the appropriate school placement of a student in foster care; however, DCF will finalize the best interest of determination if the relevant parties cannot agree on the best school for the student to attend. The district can seek review of DCF's decision by utilizing a foster care-school selection dispute resolution process established by DESI and DCF. Decisions made through this process are not subject to review. To the extent feasible and appropriate, the district will ensure that a child remains in his or her school of origin while the disputes are being resolved to minimize disruptions and reduce the number of moves between schools. Transportation. The district of origin must collaborate with DCF on how transportation will be arranged and provided to ensure that students in foster care who need transportation to remain in their school of origin will receive such transportation while they are in foster care. Transportation options may include using Title I funds, establishing regional collaborations among districts, coordinating with existing routes for transportation, seeking help from foster parents, et cetera. Absent other agreements between the district and DCF, the district of origin is responsible for providing transportation to and from the school of origin. Immediate Enrollment. If it is in the best interest of the student in foster care to leave the school of origin, the student must be immediately enrolled in the district in which he or she resides in foster care. During enrollment of students in foster care, DCF representatives will present the district with a form indicating that the student is in foster care along with a state agency identification badge. If the student does not have immediate access to immunization records, the student shall be permitted to enroll under a personal exception. Students and families should be encouraged to obtain current immunization records or immunizations as soon as possible, and the district liaison is directed to assist. Emergency contact information is required at the time of enrollment, consistent with district policies, including compliance with the state's address confidentiality program when necessary. After enrollment, the district will immediately request available records from the student's previous school. Attendance Rights by Living in Attendance Areas. Other student assignment policies or intra and inter-district choice options are available to students in foster care parentheses homeless families on the same terms as families who reside in the district. Accordingly, the district will provide transportation services to school in a manner comparable to the transportation provided for all other students in the district. Legal references, Every Student Succeeds Act, Fostering Connections to Success, and Increasing Adoptions Act of two thousand and eight, Fostering Connections Act, and sources MASC.
And, our final policy in third reading tonight is fifty-two twenty-six dot three, Educational Opportunities for Military Children. To facilitate the placement, enrollment, graduation, data collection, and provision of special services for students transferring into or out of the district because of their parents or guardians being on active duty in the U.S. Armed Services, the district supports and will implement its responsibilities as outlined in the Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunity for Military Children. The district believes it is appropriate to remove barriers to educational success imposed on children of military families resulting from frequent moves required by parents or guardians' military deployment. Definitions. Children of Military Families. School-aged children enrolled in kindergarten through twelfth grade in the household of an active-duty member of the Uniformed Service of the United States, including members of the National Guard and Reserve serving on active duty. Deployment. The period one month before the service member's departure from their home station on military orders through six months after their return to their home station. Educational Records. Official records, files, and data directly related to a student and maintained by the school, including but not limited to, records encompassing all the material kept in the student's cumulative folder. Eligible students are children of military families, as well as the children of veterans who have been severely injured and medically discharged, and children of active-duty personnel who died on active duty. Children of retired active-duty personnel are also eligible to receive services for one year following the discharge due to a severe injury or the retirement or death of an active military parent. The compact does not apply to children of inactive guard or reserves, veteran or retired personnel not included above, or U.S. Department of Defense personnel, and other federal service employees and contract employees. The district's responsibilities to eligible students include the following. Sending schools must send either official or unofficial records with the moving students, and district-receiving schools must use those records for immediate enrollment and educational placement. Upon enrollment of an eligible student, the receiving school must request official records, and the sending schools must, must, sending schools shall respond within ten days with the records. Immunization requirements of the district may be met within thirty days from the date of enrollment, or be in progress. Receiving schools must initially honor placement of students in all courses from the sending school. These include but are not limited to honors, international baccalaureate, advanced placement, vocational, technical, and career pathway courses if those courses are offered in the receiving school and spaces available. The receiving schools must also initially honor placement of like programs to those of the student in the sending state, including but not limited to gifted and talented programs and English as a second language programs. Receiving schools are not precluded from performing subsequent evaluation to ensure the appropriate placement and continued enrollment of the student in courses and programs. In compliance with federal law, the district will assume financial and programmatic responsibility for the special education programs of students with existing IEPs drafted in other states. As appropriate, the district will exercise the right to waive prerequisites for all courses and programs while also maintaining its right to reevaluate the student to ensure continued enrollment, also as deemed appropriate. Students of active-duty personnel shall have additional excused absences as necessary for visitations relative to leave or deployment. An eligible student living with a non-custodial parent or other person standing in locoparentis shall be permitted to continue to attend the school in which he or she was enrolled while living with the custodial parent or guardian without any tuition fee imposed. The district high school will accept exit or end-of-year exams required for the sending state, national norm reference tests, or alternative testing instead of testing requirements for graduation in the district-receiving state. If this is not possible, the alternative provision of the Interstate Compact shall be followed to facilitate the on-time graduation of the student in accordance with compact provisions. Legal references, MGL fifteen E, source MASC, October two thousand and nineteen.
Oh, well done.
Wow.
I will take the motion to approve.
I move that we approve all those policies that we just read through.
That's right.
Yes, read.
Sixteen oh one, fifteen oh five, sixteen oh one, thirty-one oh one, three-one oh two.
Five-one oh two.
Oh, five-one oh two, five-two-two-six, five-two-two-six-point-one, five-two-two-six-point-two, five-two-two-six-point-three.
Yes.
Second? All on paper.
Aye.
Aye.
And they will be on the left side?
They have been, they have been, they have been posted, and all of their changes, if they were in existing policy, changes were in red.
Okay.
And anything taken out was, was, has a line through it, just so that if anyone is reviewing, that's, that's where, where changes were. And if something is in red, it's a completely new policy, such as the last three we just read.
And that's how the second reading, the other ones are on the website as well, right?
Correct.
Redlined.
However, since you approved all of these this evening, they'll all be converted to...
Yes.
Regular, regular.
If someone grabbed them on the way out, they would still exist in that format.
Okay. Okay, back, now, records, back on the agenda. Athletic Advisory Committee, Mr. Linton.
Yes, yeah, we met Monday. It was very productive. We actually had the press there as well. Must have been a quiet day. That was exciting. We did have two requests for fundraisers. The first was a cross-country track and field that was approved. It was fundraiser at Chipotle, and they're gonna get thirty-three percent of the proceeds to the boosters. So people should show up Saturday, February first, from four P.M. to eight P.M.
What, what, Saturday, February first?
Saturday, February first, before the hockey game, you can go. But start from four to eight P.M. And you just share on social media, and they're gonna share on social media. The second one is also at track and field. They're gonna be doing a snap raise, which is like an online donation thing, where they send out information, send out an email to their contacts, and then people are gonna donate based off of that, and they share a story, a video.
I think that might be against policy.
Yeah, definitely against policy.
I think that kind of shit, crowd sharing.
It's crowd sharing, which we have a policy about.
If not in our school policies, we talked about that last year. We're gonna have to investigate that, and let them know.
Yes.
Okay. And the Chipotle one, there's one two weeks prior to that for the prom committee.
At Chipotle.
At Chipotle, yeah. So, I think...
That one didn't actually need to get approved, because it's a one-off. Those kind of...
The soft ones.
Yeah, the soft, the soft ones don't need to go through.
Passive.
Passive.
Oh, they do, they do, they have to go through, because the prom committee even had to go through a superintendent to get approval for that fundraiser. So...
Because they can have the student share the lines.
Yeah. All right, we gotta get that checked again, okay. Yeah, we were just talking about...
I'm pretty sure that when we talked, when we...
And maybe it is...
When we approved the initial policy...
It could be that soft fundraiser.
The passive fundraisers were exempt from this requirement.
Right, but they could only do one, correct?
They could do one, yes.
Okay.
Or two. No, they could do two.
Could they do two?
Yeah, but they had to be passive.
Passive, okay.
Correct.
All right. Okay, any, okay, sorry, Brian. Continue.
Good to know, good stuff to know. We're not gonna have a February meeting due to other athletic events going on. February, many events going on. We'll plan to meet again in March on the second, at six-thirty. Future topics of discussion, we talked about investigating again, potentially one boosters, having like a full athletic booster, and also trying to incorporate more community service for our athletes.
Oh, that would be great. Good stuff. Okay. Finance Committee, Carol.
I was unable to make the last meeting, and they did not tape it. I was unable to make the last meeting, and they did not tape it, so I have no idea what went on then, but they are meeting tomorrow night, and I will attend that meeting.
Okay. Policy Subcommittee, I think we know what you've been doing.
Working.
Yeah, working.
I think our next meeting, though, is the twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth. And you're going to have more for us to look?
We will likely have more, yes. We're going to be looking at some of the one thousand series, some of the three thousand, four thousand, and five thousand.
One, three, four, and five.
Okay.
There's some specific ones that we're looking at.
Many other urgent potential...
Yes. So we might have some more readings, too.
Okay. PTO was here at our meeting, correct? Their next meeting is Monday, this coming Monday, so I'll report on that after Monday. School Councils, has anybody had a meeting?
The primary school plans to meet January fifteenth.
Okay. High school has January fourteenth. Anyone?
The Turkey Hill is meeting on the twenty-first.
Okay. Who has primary, Wendy? Who's primary?
I...
He's got, he's on the fifteenth.
Oh, okay, so who are we missing? Middle School?
Middle School.
I'm not sure when the middle school is.
Okay.
I'll have to check my calendar if it's been set.
Um, capital planning, that's Jim, correct?
Yes, we met last night to finalize our prioritized recommendations. The total of all the requests that we received was one million, three hundred twenty-nine thousand, one hundred thirty-three dollars. And so we went through the twenty or so, well, yeah, twenty-one, looks like, requests, and then prioritized those using a new Collins Score method as a guideline. There were some things that, as we, and this is the first time we've used that, so there were some, some chances, some opportunities for us to modify that going forward because there were some things that were given perhaps a little too much weight because they thought that there was going to be funding through a grant, but if the grant funding isn't there, then it would fell to lower priority.
Oh, okay.
So there'd be some opportunities for re-scoring the measures going into the next year, but we've already got, we've got the priorities for this year.
Okay, and do they have a budget? I know it's not the one million dollars.
We have not been given any guidance.
You haven't given money from the town, the town manager yet?
From the town.
Okay.
Of how any of these would be funded, so what we did, we just prioritized in terms of what we thought needed to be done relative to the school. We had the Turkey Hill, as best as a baitment replacement as number three. The design for air conditioning for classrooms at primary at number eleven, and then the admin air conditioning at Turkey Hill at seventeen. Out of twenty-one, and then there's other ones that are higher cost items beyond, after that.
Okay.
So...
And what's your next meeting?
Our next meeting is tentatively, no, it's not tentative anymore, they did schedule it. I believe it was the twenty, sorry. It was the twenty-first.
Okay. And what, do you think you're going to get guidance at that point?
We should have the guidance at that point. We should know what the number is, and we should, that's kind of our cleanup meeting.
Okay.
So go through all the minutes and approve those, and...
Okay.
But we should have that information.
For our next meeting?
For this next meeting? I hope so, yeah.
Right.
Well, I'm hoping that we get at least a dollar amount.
Right.
And how they plan to fund it. I mean, last year we didn't manage to get everything on the capital planning was, and you know, this year they, we had a surplus, so who knows?
Okay. Wellness, Wendy?
The fifteenth, they meet.
The fifteenth, okay, Paxal. I have to look because they don't meet week monthly, so I have to check. I think I missed the December meeting. So I'll update on the next one. Lifelong Learning Advisory?
Nothing, nothing. There's, there are no current, there are no meetings scheduled.
No current meetings, okay. TC Passio's Building Design, Brian?
Yes, so we met tonight prior to this meeting.
Oh, that's where you were.
We had sent out the requests for proposals, and they were due today by noon. They received three completed proposals that were submitted. We planned to review them and then plan to interview, and then potentially select one. Our next meeting is January twenty-second, unless they changed that when I left.
Okay, now, public comment, open to the public for items that are, that the school committee is...
Covers.
Yes. Does anybody have any public comment? Do you? No.
John Roberts, I live at six Leon Lane, Lunenburg.
Yes, okay.
So I'm up here tonight just to bring an issue forward to the board, committee, that there's a school bus issue that my family's been enduring, that because of this issue, my children missed two days of school this week, and I'm simply requesting a swift resolution that is putting my family in great hardship at this time.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to discuss the matter, but there is one video, it's about a minute long, I took today, I'd just like to show the board.
What kind of video? It's the bus?
So it's the, it's the Lemmister School Bus. The Lemmister School Bus travels down Gibson Street to Gibson Street. I assumed it would be, would probably loop back around, you know, going like Castor Ave, but instead the bus takes Leon Lane, which I've been informed is a non-safe road, but I have the bus traveling up Leon Lane, using the words to turn around, and then traveling back down Leon Lane and back into Lemmister. So I'm kind of at a loss right now why the Lunenburg buses can't, can't do the same thing that the Lemmister buses are doing, and according to the emails I have, the, it's deemed unsafe, but this is just not a possibility, so I assume we need to, you know, be contacting Lemmister and letting them know that this road's not safe, that the buses shouldn't be traveling up there. I don't know, I'm really at a loss at this matter. I have the video right here, I'd like to share it with you, I could leave it with you, but as I said, this is a great hardship for my family. I believe it's a violation of the law that I should have a bus stop that is reasonable. Mr. Cassidy earlier said that, you know, no family in town should have an opportunity, have like an opportunity that another family doesn't have. I've followed the bus up and down Lancaster Ave, stops at all front, you know, the drive is a beach house, no families being asked to cross over Lancaster Ave. I've asked some very simple questions, the questions are whether or not Gibson Street's safe to walk down for me and my children, whether or not I can cross over Lancaster Ave from Gibson Street, and or however we walk to Powell's, because that was another suggested location. I don't believe any of the three locations are safe. That was my initial email that I put out early November. I received an email back in December, December sixth, prior to any snow, that the location that the current bus stop is and remains is unsafe. It specifically says unsafe to wait for the bus. So this period, you know, before the bus arrives, after the bus departs, that is unsafe. So in writing, I'm just asking for a resolution.
Okay, we can handle that, but if you would forward the, your video to us in an email?
Sure. I don't know if I can, like, email it.
Okay.
It's a high-definition video, so...
Oh, is it?
If I can put on a thumb drag, it...
Yeah.
Or Dropbox or something.
Right, Dropbox, yeah.
Dropbox, yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Perfect.
So that we can see it?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. We have another? No? No other public comment? Okay. So we have items for future discussion, topic, that will be the extended day, Early Learning Center. Approval of that will be at the next meeting. You do not have to come for that. Right? Unless you have any other questions that arise, do you guys want them to come?
If you let me know...
So that they are aware?
Maybe by them...
The only, the only reason I would ask them to be there is if we have public comment at the beginning, that there may be questions from the public that we may not be able to answer.
Okay.
Or address.
Okay.
Not necessarily answer.
Do you want to put it on your calendar for the next...
But then you can slip out.
Twenty second.
Twenty second.
Twenty second.
Twenty second, yes.
It will be at seven?
It will be at seven, yes.
At seven, okay.
Because we don't have another...
No executive section.
After that. The other one, I think?
Probably the other.
We're down the other, the other end of the hallway.
The other one, the middle school room. We're off cycle this month, this week. We're in, we're displaced this month. Yeah, yeah.
Glad to have you.
For future discussion or action, possibly action item on the implementation of the Facebook group page.
Yes, yes.
Yes, definitely.
We're going to put that on Facebook. Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And do we need to put on the revision of the coach's handbook?
I don't know that he'll have it ready for you.
Yeah, I don't know he'll have time. Yeah, but we'll keep that in mind for the, for February, maybe, and, or maybe we want him to come back. Well, now maybe by February. He'll have spring numbers at some point, too.
That might be the right time.
You know, when he has spring signup numbers? Spring attendance numbers, maybe we'll have him do the same.
Yeah, it's no urgency.
Yeah.
March, starting in March.
Yeah, end of March. Trials start that third Monday in March.
Yeah, right? It's like the teen, the Monday teen, one of them, yeah.
Yeah, trials always start the third Monday in March.
The same, yeah.
It's always the same date.
Yeah, so maybe after that he can come with the numbers and the updated handbook. Anything else? Anything else?
No, we're getting close to starting the budget season.
Ooh, budget, yeah.
Right? First, by the first meeting in February.
Yeah.
Right.
We have a, we're planning a presentation at the next meeting.
At the next meeting?
So, okay, great.
And then, a question?
I, I don't think it makes sense for a question and answer on that.
No, no, in the February meeting.
The following...
The February meeting, okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Anyhow?
No.
I thought you were like, a motion to adjourn.
No, it's just...
Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, nine o'clock is off.